All right, let's call the meeting board please and let the record note that alternate my chairman's excuse. First item on the agenda, consideration of the meeting minutes from Jan- January twenty fifth, twenty twenty three. Does anyone have any changes?
I'll just read them now.
The only thing I noticed was. Loom alone, however you want to pronounce it. It's L O A M.
But L O A M, right.
But I don't know how it was gonna look.
Where is that?
It's in about three or four different places.
Oh.
Low. Do a word search and just fix spelling.
Okay.
Does anyone have anything else? Joe?
I. Really didn't have a chance to read them so. As long as it's that rhythm, I guess. I just want to make sure that the. The discussions that we had about the bond were. As we have been.
Right, everybody was here, so I'll vote on it. Is that me? Is there a meeting as a motion, motion to accept the minutes from January twenty fifth? As presented with that one change? Second? All in favor? I. Motion carries, anyone opposed? Any extensions?
Oh, thanks, like I said, I don't have a chance to read it.
So forth, eyes and one abstention. Motion carries. Uh, next item, continuing other business. Mark Gozen D B A South Peak L C, New Hampshire Restaurant Group L L C, semi base camp at seventy five Crook and Mountain Road. Out to a buyer in a storage container on the deck and outdoor seating without site plan review approval. Mark Gozen D B A South Peak L C, New Hampshire Restaurant Group, L L C, semi space campus seventy five Crook and Mountain Road, outdoor buyer and storage container on the deck and outdoor seating without site plan approval. After being advised by P V to get approval. So is anyone here for this?
We are putting this.
There are two, there are two emails in there.
So there's.
One from this right hand man Jim Burns and another one. Was from Brian Norton.
I didn't see that, I haven't seen this one either. These weren't, were these in that thing that you sent, what do you call it?
The drop box.
Yeah. I sent it to another email saying.
I can get through that, they can find that stuff that you got here. You get that to work? Need one of us can, I had it working for a while, the other phone, I just got a new phone, I can't get any. Change your password, change your password, change it.
Okay, so who else is having trouble with the drop box? Steve is having trouble?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm in troubles with getting all of the stuff out of it, I guess, but I didn't see this.
Did you see the letter from, from Jim Burns?
No, I didn't see that either.
Do you have a copy?
I have a copy now, that's good.
Can I suggest you read that first? That kind of sums up the whole thing.
Well.
In two sentences. I mean, they're basically taking, doing away with the container, it's positive issue.
It doesn't, it does. I mean, that wasn't the only thing that we had, that I had a question on. I mean. We got this letter from Brian Norton on. Tuesday, February twenty third, so semi base camp still owned and operated by a little mountain, it's not owned by a little mountain.
It's very confusing to me, this is what I.
It's not owned by a little mountain, it's not operated by a little mountain, it's leased to a, it's leased to a, I mean, like I said, it's leased to the, the group.
Cause New Hampshire Restaurant Group L L C apparently is leasing.
Well, that's. I don't understand this.
We can all talk with each other.
But.
Mark goes in, talked to Karina and I. He told us that he now owns. I don't think he realized maybe that he doesn't own the base camp. I know he levels the land underneath. Cause that was owned by South Peak. And then the building is, it was leased to Moon Mountain Recreation Corporation. And Moon Mountain Recreation Corporation then operated, according to Brian. The warm up hut, but then they had a separate subcontractor come in to do the beverage and. Um, the food. And so the, and then he mentions a couple of other subcontractors that he had. Before Mark DeGosian's group, which is called New Hampshire. The food group, a restaurant group or something. Um, but I think that when Mark was talking to Karina, I don't know. Um, he either misunderstood what he said. Or he didn't realize that he didn't, he doesn't. Have the building. I don't know.
Well, several things. Comments about that. It's, it doesn't say that on the tax map. They call it Mark DeGosian, his, his, it's underneath himself peak. The. So I'm, I guess I'm confused, I'd like to see some. I'd like to see some documentation that shows who owns what because it doesn't say that on the. Tax map, so we would, and I'd like to see who, if it's being leased by Loon. Or if it's being leased by DeGosian. Uh, and again, I haven't written all the way down through this. But this, on his, his second bullet point says. F and B component capacity has not changed since two thousand and four, site plan review, that's another. Misnomer, have any of you been in there? It's going, anyone been in?
I've been in there.
Yeah, it's a big bar. But the band never was that, was never that, it was a, when that place was first put in. It was supposed to be a warm up hut with food, paper plates that they were gonna bring. And paper supplies, they were gonna bring the food from the governor's lodge or the octagon lodge down there. And there was not even gonna be a kitchen there, that's why they asked for the, the reduction in points. So, I mean, it's.
So, I might ask, are they using paper plates now or are they using regular forks and knives?
I think they're using paper from what I saw, they have, they have a whole separate food service thing and then I don't know if there's more. I don't know if anyone's gone in there and done a kitchen count, there was never a kitchen and there's supposed to be, and now they have a kitchen where they serve stuff. There's also a downstairs in there. I mean, and. The bars, and, and they got a band, they got a band and a, a stage, right, and they got two long bars in there. That's nowhere what it used to be at all, so the whole thing has really changed. I don't care about the changes. What I care about is that if it has changed. If it's not a loon mountain entity. Then, then parking comes into play. Because you can't have, who's parking is the parking lot, is it loans as a, as a ski area, or is it? If it's a separate lot and a separate entity owns it, then the parking becomes a whole, it could be like, if I want, if I had a lot over there and I opened up a clothing store, I would need parking for that.
It was approved as a clothing store previously. And you're the new operator of it, it doesn't need site.
If it was, but this was not approved as a bar.
It's approved as a food service.
It was approved as.
It is, and it's food service, so, so.
Warm up.
The ownership and leasing don't trigger site plan review, it doesn't anywhere in town.
No.
Right, right, that was on.
No, no, I, I would agree.
Okay.
But, but if it's a whole separate, if it's a whole separate entity. And it's operating as such, then, then that would do it.
What do you mean entity?
If, if Loon doesn't own that, if it's separate entity.
Doesn't matter.
Where's the parking? That's my question, where's the parking?
Where was the parking in two thousand and four when it was approved?
It was Loon Mountains parking.
No, it was, it was the. Operation within that building as a food service.
As food service.
Okay, have required parking.
You're right.
If, if, if the. Whatever, the, the shop over at the mall.
Changed.
Changed and now it's a, a different shop.
That's a bar.
Okay, and now you buy it, now it's your bar. Okay? That doesn't.
What is the parking for, is it?
So they didn't come in to subdivide the property off and sell that piece, they.
But the property is subdivided, it is all pieces. According to the tax.
Okay, but I mean, it was probably a separate sandal or not in two thousand and four perhaps.
That's why I'm asking for some documentation, saying what, what is, cause that was this. On a tax map, I believe it shows a separate entity, it doesn't show that it's loans, it was sold to that food group.
They couldn't, they couldn't chunk it off and sell it separately without subdivision approval. Unless it was a.
Business can be sold. I'm still, yeah, business can be sold. But it's still on, the, the business can be on, the property and the, the property and the pictures are actually belong to the property owner. But you still can operate as a second owner for the business, am I correct, OJ?
Mm-hmm.
And still would have a good site plan interview. That's the point OJ is trying to make, I totally agree with him.
But you've changed, when you changed the business on there as well.
So, I mean, I guess.
It's a total change from what was there.
Hold on, hold on, one more time.
That's a whole separate thing, like I said, I'm going down through this, I want to get to the second bullet point, so I'm trying to like bring my questions up as like they go.
Okay, so Joe was gonna speak, then OJ can speak.
All right.
But if you're taking out the bar, that makes a good point.
Says it taken out the, the storage container bar.
The outside container.
Yep.
And they also, I thought there was an issue with the amount of people that were being served. And it must six.
They had a hundred and. Seventy six and I think grew up over two hundred.
They had a hundred and forty seven, I thought.
Well, there is two separate things going on, and one is.
One seventy six.
Passing of the building. That comes from the fire department, you know, it's based on square footage. Which is a different number than was approved by. Um, the site plan review, but it's because of the space and not. Not for any other reason, but. Um. I didn't see any evidence in the paperwork. That I looked at. That said there was gonna be outdoor service. Um. They didn't see notes about it, I mean, I could have missed it. Um.
They did bring it up on kind of tiny board, from the original one, you mean?
Yeah.
The original one didn't have any of that, the original one only had that that was going to be. A warming hut. And it was a temporary warming hut and they were gonna bring food, that's what was it here when I did that. And they were talking about bringing the food from either the governor's lodge or the octagon lodge down there, there wasn't even gonna be a kitchen there, that's why they were doing the paper plates and all that stuff. So it, it was basically just gonna be warming up until they could, till Luke could. Build something more bigger or whatever they decided they wanted to do. I mean, this, this thing now is, is, is a bar with a, with a stage and a band. It does have food, has to have food, cause it's a bar, but it's, it's a totally changed venue. And like I said, I, I don't know about the land. Who owns the land, when I look at tax map, it says someone else owns the land. To me, if someone else owns the land and they've changed the venue, it should come before site plan review, especially if they've increased the seating as well. So that's, and I'm going down, again, I'm just.
Increase in the seating does trigger the need for site plan. Review, you're right, but it's like.
They, they told us that the number of seats was gonna be the same, the one seventy six.
And where do we get the? Um, two forty five from?
That's, that's from the fire department, um, measuring the building and that's the occupancy, potential occupancy.
Well, I would think that that would need to be also verified. Yeah. As to what it actually is going to be, I mean, if the approval was for one seventy six. If, if it's, if it's more than one seventy six, then that's a whole nother reason for coming in for site plan review, if, if they want to be more than one seventy six.
Oh yeah, you have a question for you. For you, to me, when I remember calling, it may not have been written down. But I believe they came in one time by having bands standing up over there, I don't know if you were here with that one. Here you were to be about two or three years ago.
I don't remember them asking for bands there.
Said they were gonna be, I remember hearing that one time, was it me? Not on the paper anyway, I can, I'm just going through what my memory just tells me. That, it doesn't do with them personally, so.
Right.
Doesn't make any difference to me one way or the other. But. What I recall, they did mention, bring up something about the band being played over there. They have it in quite a while, in fact, sometimes I could even hear them over here in Windsor.
Well, I doubt that, Joe, because if you go to the place, when they had their bands there and I, they, they, the one day that I was there, they had a pretty loud band.
That's what I used to hear.
Let me finish, Joe. I walked right outside there and you couldn't, when you, when I went to get my car, you couldn't hear the band. So it was a real loud band, so I'm not complaining about the noise, I'm just saying it's a change of, the, the venue change. We had somebody come in and wanted to have a, who was, I believe it was the Kank Motor Lodge. They wanted to have a, uh, music up there. And we said that was a whole change and they had to come in for site plan review. So we gotta be consistent here, I mean, there was actually, was Mexican place wanted to be into, there was someone else wanted to be into and we made them say, look, you gotta, you gotta come in there. I mean, I don't care what they put there, I just think that it should come in, if it's a change from what was originally supposed to be there. Then I think they have a responsibility to come with, to do a site plan review, which is what we told them originally. Right, and he was supposed to come in and he had four weeks to do it and he didn't do it. So that the, any of butters or anyone that had any concerns could voice them. That's what we said. And none of that has happened.
So there was confusion as to which party actually is in control there, I mean. Mr. DeGosian represented that he had purchased it and leased it to this New Hampshire. Food group and now.
My understanding, yeah, my understanding was that he actually leased it to the. The group. So I'd like to see some, I had heard, I had heard.
Saying it's a brew pub, I don't think.
Well, the, the brewery, whatever that brewery is, I'd like to see some documentation that says. Who had, who owns it, you know, because.
Carol, when you set, set this information out, has everyone been provided with copies of two thousand and four pool?
Um, they did at the last, at the meeting in November.
Okay.
I think it was.
No, no, I'm not talking about the board members, I'm talking about. The parties involved here.
Oh yeah, they've seen, they've seen in the paper plate, the whole package with the paper plates and all that stuff, yeah.
I mean, there's nothing.
Karina sent it to them. Um, we're just, I think I printed it out here.
There's nothing in any minutes that say that there's been a change other than what it was approved for. And whatever year it was approved.
Two thousand and four.
Two thousand and four. I mean, the, the, the building permit was issued in two thousand and seven, there was no, so there's no minutes or any documentation that says. What it was. When the change was, I mean, when, when you look at the, Carol did, give us a. The sewer tap assessment formers for a hundred and seventy six seats. Bar, buyers were zero, kitchens were zero. I mean, so the original. When you look at stuff that's there, it, it just. It's not consistent with what's there now. And again, I don't care what he puts there, what I care is that. If, if it's a changed venue, then it should come in for site plan review, if it's bigger, if it's changed, so that people. Butters have an opportunity to say, this is great for, we don't like, we don't want a bar in our, our neighborhood, you know? Like I mean, it's, it, it's strict, it's strictly a bar. It, I mean, it's.
This is outside of store.
Good time there, it's, it's a good time, there's nothing wrong with it, 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 it's a good time, but you know, it is a change from what was originally there.
Okay.
And the container wasn't changed, right, and, and they said that, so they took care of that part of it, you know, so that's fine.
Yeah, when.
And he's, he's, what he's, what he's, Brian is saying in his letter that. Some of those seats are for actual skiers to take a break, not actual food service seats, some of those outside seats.
There are some other outside seats there, I've taken some pictures on, there are some other outside seats that are other than. The way they had the container, cause the container had, has bar seats around it. And then there's some outside tables that people can sit at, and, and, and those I would think, you know. Like I said, it's just a whole different concept than what was there. And Brian, Brian wasn't there, so for Brian, he hasn't been there all this time, so for him to. Say what it was originally for, what it is now, and we, unless we have some documentation that shows that, and, and I don't have that.
Okay, so, um, I thought, um, Dan printed out right before I came in here. Um, the letter that Karina sent, um, to the liquor commission, um. For the New Hampshire Restaurant Group L L C and semi base camp. It said, uh, you know, this letter is informing that the town, Lincoln, New Hampshire has no objections to the above reference. Commander Lawson's base camp located at seventy five, you know, to obtain a liquor license for their operation. At some location under the Perrins Bar and Saute. It says, please note that the Moon Mountain Recreation Corporation received a reduction in water sewer tap fees back in September two thousand and seven, see attached. When the temporary fabric structure base lodge facility was erected because both. Our food and beverage venue in this temporary base lodge will utilize disposable paper products rather than washable dishware and line of classroom. Therefore, Loon Mountain is requesting a three-fifths reduction on the water and sewer point assessments. So if you decide to transition to glassware and washable dishware, you'll need to reach out to. Planning Department to discuss waters where that would be their push, so. Um.
I mean, if you look at them. You know, I did a copy earlier, but if, if you look at the.
There's the, you know, building permits and everything is attached.
Right, DeGosian even said himself that he realized that he needed site plan and review for that.
Right.
They, they've been saying that, so, so there's a letter from, there's a letter from the planning board, they, they did December first, from plan, from Carol. DeGosian and his team are going to come in on Wednesday, December fourteenth, Burke Conceptual, semi base camp. I don't believe that ever happened. At the same time, we will submit an application for site plan review for the additional seating associated with. The very looming indoor bar. I mean, and, and he's. For additional seating associated with a new proposed very long indoor bar, this came from Carol, I think. Um, and, and the seats on the outside deck. They were, uh, temporary fabric lodge with a hundred and seventy six seats and. Uh, two hundred and forty five. Uh, based on their, they don't know how that happened. Um. Yeah, I mean, I think we're creating, wrote that thing to liquor. The liquor thing, she probably said that, did she talk to you before she wrote that?
You know, I, I suspect she wrote that because there's a new applicant. Would have transferred to, um. This new operator, they had to get a new liquor license, so they had to start all over.
But I mean, I would have asked Carol and said, hey, you know, is there a site? Is the site approved for that? Is that a change, is it a change?
Yes, that was attached, you know, that's. I got her this information before she did this letter. To the liquor commission.
I mean, DeGosian even said, even up toward January fourth, he said that he'd be happy to come back in for safe plan review, we told him yes, and he said come in. Them four weeks, I mean, so. I think what's happened here is that they made a change. They want to keep it running. They tried to make a deal with Carol and, and Karina, which I'm not happy with at all that he came in to that, I think that was pretty low. To subvert the planning board and do that. Um. If they want to leave the same way that they originally had it, which was a food service venue. And I'll have the bar and I'd have no problem with it. You know, but the bar is a big, the bar, the band, it's, it's a big change, we've made other applicants. Come in based on that. And he even agreed that he would come in and do it, and he didn't do it. I mean, if we allow someone to do that. Others are gonna be able to do it too. You can't just come in after this bath and say, oh, well, we did this, but we need to get through the summer. Do you mind waiting until, uh, the winter, we'll come back in for site plan review, we don't do that, that's not the purpose of the plan or site plan and review.
Has anyone else seen it before and after over there? I mean, I knew you said it, but does anyone? Can you fill us in, if you, is it changed, is it the same? As far as I know, they've been serving alcohol there. For, prior to the South Peak, um, control of operation within that building. Um. The bar setup is different, is. I would think less seating inside, but I haven't, didn't go in and count chairs, but it used to be big, long tables with. Whatever, eight, ten seats down each side.
They still have some of those.
I know they do, but they got rid of a lot because they put in long bars.
A bar and a bit of a band there.
Bar stool, bar stool, they replaced. Big long tables with, with bar space where no one sits, all right, and then bar stools where people do sit, but far more spread out. So, I, I don't know if they're.
How about the food service, OJ, was that?
Food service has always been there, I don't know.
Always on that corner where it was and that they have a sink and all that?
But the.
Yeah, they have.
When you go in and you turn right, it's at the far end and it's always been there.
Go in and turn. I can remember my son get married there and, and it was, it was, there was nothing there for really for food service, it was just a couple of. Couple of things, you know, and, and, and it wasn't, that's why I was going by what.
That's where I generally go to go skiing, that's the base lodge, you can park close, it's easy, everything, and I love South Peak, but anyway. Yeah, that food services, and I'm gonna say always, but for a long time has been up that. What would be the eastern end of that building. Um. Now. I was in there last week and I didn't. Notice any major changes up there, maybe they have silverware, I don't know.
I don't know.
But, but the bar space and the ticket booth setup. Which used to face inside, now faces outside, there's windows and all that, um. Has changed, but I don't think, I don't think it could have possibly increased. Seating. I also know that, again, for years, maybe not since two thousand and four, but for years, there's been seating on the outside deck.
Right.
All right, and whether people are eating out there or just. Sitting and taking a break from skiing out there or eating waffles out there, they've been out there for years. So, so. From my perspective, number one, who owns it and who's leasing it is not our business. That doesn't trigger site plan in any version of our, of our rules, okay? Anyone can run it, anyone can own it, it's change of use. So, so, okay, so let's, let's throw the ownership questions and nonsense out the window.
Depends on what their landlord is doing with it. You're right.
It's the use, okay, so. There's been eating and drinking on the outside. Space for years, I don't know, I don't know what's in the two thousand and four. Application and approval. But it's not just in the conditions, it's what's in the approval, hold on.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so, so, so that's one thing is, let's, let's look up what the two thousand and four approval was as far as. Eating and, and drinking. Um.
That's the problem, I think there is, I don't think there's a lot of.
Well, then, then it's gonna be hard to enforce. You know, we can go back and read the minutes of those meetings and, and if they said they weren't gonna do this or we're gonna do that.
The minutes may have some stuff back then.
But, but. You know, some of those approvals, especially back then. I'm gonna Carol, our approvals were pretty quick and easy, okay? Maybe not the process, but the, but the written documentation. Was, was pretty simplified. Um, yeah, so, so I think that the questions for this board is. Does anything that they've done trigger site plan, they haven't, at least I've encountered chairs, like I said, but it doesn't seem like they could possibly have more chairs. In there with the bar space, but we can go up and count for some again, or even I just ask them. All right, and if that doesn't trigger site plan, then does, does the enlarged bar space. Violate the terms of the two thousand and four approval, okay? They were serving alcohol there again for years, but now they're serving it behind bars instead of up at the end where the food was. You, you know, is that a change of use? They're still drinking beer, they're still sitting down, um, it's just that they're sitting this way instead of this way. I don't know, it's a change of use, I, I don't know. Maybe, maybe, ask, do they serve just beer and wine or full liquor? I don't know, I don't.
Yeah, I think they serve full liquor, I think that my wife got a different trick there. But I think what's happened here. Is a little bit of what I've said and a little bit what you said, it was originally. Supposed to be a warming hut with food being brought in from west, uh, governor's lodge, anti octagon. And throughout the years since two thousand and four, nineteen years, throughout the nineteen years. Things have changed and they haven't come back in for site plan review. Then the big change came with all the different developers that have been there bought that, now we're here with Mark DeGosian, Mark DeGosian has, has changed it. And said, and realized, you know what? It's changed so much that we need site plan review and talk to Carol, but then. It looks, you know, I think I, I agree with you that we did, we need to verify. How many seats, we need to verify if it's a change of venue, we need to verify. You know, the, the, because that the, the band and stuff like that. I agree with you about who owns it. I'm a little concerned about the parking aspect of it, only because if, if that's owned by a different person. And that, say they want to hold a separate party there. They're gonna not only be parking skier, skiers in that parking lot. They're, they're gonna. They're they're gonna have a hundred and seventies, i- if it is a hundred and seventy six, hundred and seventy six other people. That again, come for a party, a wedding, whatever it is, and it's a winter time function. They're trying to find a place to park. So if it's owned by a different entity. Loon doesn't have, they don't have control of that parking area. That's. That's where I was going with the parking stuff. It's it's not about, if Loon owned it, Loon has control of it, you know, and they can say, look, we we. We're gonna hold a venue there, we're it's not gonna be open to sell tickets or it's not gonna be open to to the skiers because we're gonna hold a separate venue there. You will have a a different owner there. They can't go tell Loon, hey, look. Said, we want that whole parking lot today because we get a hundred and seventy six other people coming here. That are not gonna be skiing and they're gonna have a a party. They're open till, they're open till one o'clock in the morning. Uh weekends, one week, one one or two days a weekend. So I mean, it's 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 a total, it's a total different thing here and. You know, my point is that Mark realized that and he was supposed to come in. And that's why I I got a little haggled when he said he he wanted to strike a deal and he wanted to. Get this thing for the rest of the winter. I mean, he realized he had to come in. We have to. We have to treat people fairly. We can't just make the rules go just because someone forgot to do something because it. He had time, he had since December first to do this, and he realized that then, but by the documentation here. I mean, and and that's what I'm saying. Put it back to what it was. Put it back to what it was two thousand and four. He can come in. You were here, OJ, when we talked and and we told, look, it's not a big deal. It only takes four weeks to get this thing. Noticed and have you come in for site plan review? And the public can come in and then you can, and then if everybody's happy with it, goes on. But to not do that, I think is is not. Not appropriate. True.
Go ahead. I was here when we had that discussion and the big harangue. About the discussion and what he did was the box, the container, the new bar and sitting outside and that's. That was the impression I would have, I left with as a planning board member, and I would think that he left, that the big harangue. Was that contain them in the outdoor seating. And we have a letter that says we're getting rid of that and if it's so, it's not like. He said he was gonna do it, now he didn't and he's not keeping his word. It's. We were really concerned about, I sent a message to him that we're really concerned about the outdoor box. They're gonna get rid of it, so we don't need to go. Now, if if that's not the case anymore, let's back it up with the two thousand and four decision. The paper plates, the water points and say. This is it, but we need to do our research.
Look, yeah.
Okay.
No, I agree with you. I I agree with you, but. I had brought up. All of that stuff and and the fact that it was. It was a bar. You know, and and he agreed that he was gonna come in for site plan review. It wasn't a matter of what we had decided. Individually, he agreed that it needed site plan review because he wanted to make those changes. And. I I think he needs to do that. I really do. It's it's, I mean, you know, you can't operate a place till. Till one in the morning that was normally only open during ski ski hours and say it's time to change. You just can't, it it doesn't work that way.
Well, how long have they been open since one in the morning?
Sometimes, I believe they had bands and started down there this winter. It it's that, it was advertised. It's not every day of the week that they're open, it's weekends, but I mean, it's a, you know, and the bands were were never there and the long bars were never, that's what I'm saying. I don't care, I don't care what he puts there. That night when we left, that's that's pretty much the way we left it was. He got up and he said, yes, I'll be back in four weeks. We all, we were sitting right here and that's what he said, I'll I'll be back, I'll get it done. As a matter of fact, he said he would have his. Was it his group or his, whatever he has. Take care of it and get it all done so so that in four weeks, it could be, he could come in for site plan review. He has a committee or whatever he has that works on his sub big stuff. And it it hasn't happened since, I mean, this thing's been going on. Originally since December first, since December, January third. January. You know, so. All I'm saying is he he asked. Like, and and he wanted to carry it on for two or three years at this rate till he decided what he was gonna do.
Well, he said.
With the property.
The first letter was just the one season he wanted to operate, it wasn't two or three years.
One whole, but then he, but but then he came back, he said. He he wanted to go somewhere in here. It says that he wanted to go. Un- until he could decide how big a lodge or he wanted for two or three years till they can make a decision as to what he wanted to do. At somewhere in there.
Steve, you having touch?
Yeah, I'd say it was four weeks ago, we told him. For us to tell him to go ahead and do something.
Right, we said we couldn't make something legal, it's illegal.
Yeah. But that was just referring to the outdoor seating, right? Whatever was going on.
The storage container bar, I believe is what. They're saying that's the only change they've made is that. Is that storage container bar, they're saying they're doing away with it.
Just have somebody go and take a look, like, what's the saying, we talking?
I mean, the first thing that should be looked at is the details of the two thousand and four approval.
We have to see what was approved and what's been changed.
And then and then make a list of.
Yeah, back to two thousand and four.
Yeah, then make a list of questions and related to that, you know, was was. The paper plates thing, you know, part of that approval, is it still in existence or do they change that? You know, the hundred and seventy six seats, is that still at or less, is it still at or less than that capacity? You know, just look at the different things and say, wh- what now are the things that that might be?
But I think the ownership, so OJ, I mean, I'm not trying to totally disagree with it.
With that, because it 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 doesn't, and it says it in a a thing, and you can talk all you want about parking, it's the use. Of the property, it's the use.
If I own that property.
I I you've already explained this and I'm gonna continue to disagree. I think you're wrong.
Well, I think you're wrong, OJ.
Then then let's end the discussion and not keep repeating a few long myths and I. Okay, we're we're at odds here.
Okay.
Okay.
Steve, go ahead.
What about the water points? Does it matter if you're washing dishes or flushing toilets or both?
That's why, well, the toilets are based on a number of seats, but you got a reduction, they got a reduction because they're using paper plates. Uh, no, you know, no dishwasher, et cetera.
I mean, Carol gave us that information.
We also need to see if they built a kitchen to cook the food, and if they did that, that kind of negates.
I mean.
Kind of the water points.
Right, I mean, but see, there's there's assessment for bars.
Basically, it's like having food trucks.
Yeah.
You don't give for water points or food truck.
Yeah, but you get a transient vendor license, and then you have the. I mean, it's more complicated than that. We give permits for. Transient vendors and, you know, they have to.
But how did that affect the water points? You're not using it from the downwater. You have a food truck.
They don't. They have, it's a whole separate section of the of the of the of the planning's plan order. And we give them a license.
We're now discussing about the water points.
In two thousand and seven. I think we all got this, the the building firm, building firm, with with the with the water tap fees on it. It had, it has restaurants, a hundred and seventy six seats. Bars were nothing, kitchens were nothing. They have the water fountain, they've uh had. They have a couple of small things on here. Um, but the, you know, there there was nothing in there for bars, nothing in there for kitchens. If you had two big bars in there, it would have been in here. If you had a kitchen in there, it would have been in here in two thousand and seven. It's not in there. There was nothing in the original two thousand and four, two thousand and seven change that said they were gonna operate till midnight or one o'clock in the morning. So, I mean.
I mean, we typically.
I, you know, you gotta look back at the minutes and see if there's anything. That was detailed about that, but we're eight weeks into looking at this, we have. Pergosian was one, he wants this change, so in order to have that.
According to Brian Norton, Pergosian's not even in charge over that.
Well.
Confusion as to who's who actually should be dealing with.
With the grid, what's the second type thing?
What's that?
They all say it was a grid, what's the second?
Right.
But we.
We need, I mean, we need more information really to make a decision, I think.
Yeah.
Wait, is there a way to find out how long they've had a liquor license over there?
Yeah, it's called, it's called.
Yeah.
I I don't know, uh, cause the.
Well, I mean, how far do they?
Town manager writes the letter saying the town is no objection.
I mean, do we have any old letters? Maybe they they got their liquor license in twenty twelve.
I don't know, I'll have to find out.
The record in Cockin is liquor commission.
Who knows how long they keep it?
That's what goes on.
Like I said, again, in in two thousand and seven, when they did the water tap things, it it said they didn't have any bars. Now, is that liquor or is that beer? I I hey. I don't know, but I'm just saying that they didn't, they did, there was nothing assessed for that, which would.
Right, but.
We mean and believe that there's there's no.
What's the assessment for a bar? It's the same, right?
The bars are total seating capacity, five points, right?
And what's the restaurant? For it's for a segment.
Restaurant is. One point zero points times the total number of seating.
And what's a bar?
Bar posting capacity. Hard to see, it might be point five, OJ, it might be half maybe for a bar because. So the thing would be there.
So so they could.
Right.
Double the seats without having to pay any extra, I think they want the other way.
Kitchens are five point oh, right, but if you don't have a bar, that that's the change, is what I'm saying. I was. I was looking at the points, I was looking at the change, but if there was no bar that that was there. To be thought of in two thousand and seven. And again, like I said, I think what's happened is it has changed. And.
I I'm not denying that, I'm saying we should look back and see what was approved in two thousand and four. Okay, and make sure we know where we stand, what was approved. And take it from there.
So we'll have to look at the minutes, we'll have to ask for.
But I mean, I I'm just thinking with.
The liquor.
You know, okay, still have a hundred and seventy six seats and they started serving beer and wine, doesn't make a heck of a lot of difference to just. Change the menu a little bit.
It makes a big difference if they're gonna have a band.
Okay, well, we're talking about a band.
And they're gonna open it till one o'clock in the morning. Well, I wanna give him what he wants.
Facts, yeah, that's why I have to ask questions.
I wanna give him what he wants, but I think he it it what he wants is totally different. Than what was originally, in my opinion, OJ and I disagreed that that what was. What was originally established and or thought of in two thousand and four, because I was there when they were doing that.
Right, I mean, it seems they've made some changes.
You know, and I I think it's progressed. You know, and and no one thought about coming back in for site plan review. And to be honest, we don't think Pergosian was doing the right thing. He said, hey, this is what I want to make this thing. Now, I own it, it's my property, I want to make it into this. Can I get site plan review for it? We said, yes, come in. And we told him four weeks and nothing's happened. But he wants to go a little longer with it, and I think I do. I think you really gotta. It's been going on since December.
You know, in some ways, Paul is right. I mean, I'm not saying you're wrong, but. I can see your point, because he said you wanted, he himself said he wanted to come to site plan review.
Yeah.
But I think when he pulled the bar off, the container bar, he thought that was the end of it, but it's not. OJ, you brought that up yourself, I believe. So we might should have a talk with him and go over the let, and admit a. The the board decision in two thousand and four. Discuss it openly and upfront with everybody, have him come in, he just he can easily keep the band. Have him come in for site plan review and could be a major, could be a great major thing.
Oh, it should, it really should. I don't think it's gonna be a big thing to come in for site plan review. He fills out the forms, he comes in. Knows five year butters and i- i- if if there's no problems with it. Then they it sails right through and you you wanna know if there's problems with it now, you don't wanna be wait till later. You know, find out that's what's problem.
Substantial change, I'm. I'm not against doing site plan review, but I'm just. Just wondering if it's been minded tweak, so if he's just revamped.
I think there's been some major changes since the two thousand and four conception of what this was. And and as I said, I don't think anybody thought about coming before the planning board for site plan review, except for Mr. Pergosian. And I think he's doing the right thing because he knows what he wants there. And if, one of the things I told was, when you come back with your site plan review, make sure it's what you want it to be.
Right.
You know, and when he left last night. I said, make sure it's what you want it to be when you come for site plan review so you can get it. You know, and and you can have your approval for everything.
Another point too. That's they're gonna be expanding South Peak ski area. It might be, it might be behooves to him to expand, ask for more than he needs right now. Really, I'll be grandfather, put the stuff in when it does expand. Would you know, if you're on the same. He has seen two forty five, he more increased to four or five. Overall max, till he asks you to site plan review again. This um, this is a long term effect. But he still should give me the site plan review, that he, after we determine whether he has or not.
I think we can ask all those questions at that time, you know, when he comes in and. He was agreeing to all that. He was agreeing to come in for site plan review because he wanted to make those changes. He just hasn't done it. And, you know, we're we're going through this, through the the season and. I just don't think it's appropriate that we continue this and. But OJ says, and I I suppose we probably, we should know what leg we're standing on here. You know, and and find that, find that out, but I was going by what I knew, you're going by what you knew, and now we had.
I don't know why, it wasn't.
I mean, I look at, I look at the.
I don't remember seeing that, maybe I did back in November, but I don't remember what that said.
Yeah, I mean.
When did you get that?
The hearing, there was a hearing on January fourth.
Yeah.
That's when you.
I think it was like January second or the third or fourth or whatever we got. I mean, because it had the. Water supply ordinance in with it and water.
I guess.
It had a letter from Ted uh. Ted Sut to Rick Kelly about the paper plates and had. But, I mean, you know, when I, well, yeah, I mean, when I look at it, I just. Like I said, I I looked at the thing and it said there was no bars, there's no assessment for a bar, which means there was no.
I get it.
Yeah.
So so so. Let's make a list of what was approved, what's there now that are different. And then determine as a board what things we wanted, we think trigger.
And and like I said, I I bet no, I went over there just to see what it was because I'm, you know. Playing board, I, it was a pretty fun time being over there, but it wasn't what it was ever supposed to be. That's, you know, and that's why Mr. Pergosian was coming in, I think, because he wants something like that. And, you know, maybe it's a good thing for the, for him or the mount, but again. You know, we're we're gonna disagree on the the ownership of the thing, but I think that has a big bearing on how the parking goes, especially if it gets bigger. And a different owner owns it and he. He's doing a venue the same type of scene.
Loon is still the lessor. They they leased that operation, just like they leased.
I don't know if that's true though, that's not what I'm hearing, that's not what I'm hearing.
Well, Brian Norton just represented that he.
Ryan, Brian said.
Yeah, but I don't.
Operated by Little Mountain, but over here it says twenty one, Mark. Took over the operation of it.
Right.
I mean, Mark represented that he was the one leasing it out to this group, so it's.
Yeah, so it's, that's a third.
I think he represented that he was part of that New Hampshire food group.
Well, he is part of that New Hampshire food group.
Right, so he's not the lessor, he's the lessy. He's he's leasing it from Loon Mountain.
Well, I had the, I had the.
Okay.
Is he leasing the pen, you know, OJ, you think? I mean.
Leasing just the food service operation. Loon says Loon, Pemmy Base Camp is still owned and operated by Loon Mountain. So Loon operates the Pemmy Base Camp, so when it comes to buying a ticket, you're buying it from a Loon employee. Okay, when it comes to cleaning the bathrooms, Loon's in charge, maybe the base camp is that's in the.
They think Pergosian leases. Pergosian bought the property?
No.
Well, it shows it on tax method, Pergosian.
Leases the operation of the food service.
He owns.
Pergosian owns the land.
Yes.
Still this.
Well, I, that's the, the the questions are, who owns the, so the questions are, who owns the building?
See, to me, that's all the questions.
Who owns the building and who oper, who who's at least it?
He can ask that, but it it doesn't trigger site plan review.
Well, like I said. I know you and I are in odds, but just, but I think if it's a separate owner and they they bring in a separate function, other than skiing. Where you, you you're double selling those parking lots, parking spaces. And, you know, Joe's always said stuff about, you know, not being enough parking. At South Peak anyway, so I mean, it it's.
I guess the question is, is it's a parking owner, share an easement for the parking, that will, that will solve.
Right, that's all I care about, I said, if if there's a separate function going on, has nothing to do with skiing. That.
During, during a busy.
During, during, during a ski weekend, someone wants to have a baby shower, I don't care what you call it.
With the lease that Loon has with this New Hampshire food group. Could that possibly occur?
Could that occur?
Could that, okay, we don't care who owns what or whatever, but would that occur?
And where would the park and then go?
Well, let's first, because the answer is no, then we don't care where the parking would go.
But if there's something in the lease that says that. So if there's something in the lease that says that they can't hold a separate function.
Well, I guess the question is, why would they close the food service? That's that's what he's trying to ask, why would they close the food service on a busy weekend?
To to to, yes.
Well, depends if you. As long as Loon has the authority to say they can control it, that's fine.
Okay, so let's ask that question.
If if Pergosi owns it.
But not owns it.
He owns a property.
If the lease that New Hampshire food group has with Loom Mountain allows them to stop serving skiers so they can run a private function. We need to talk about parking, but if that's excluded in the lease.
If that's excluded in the lease, I would agree.
Let's not even talk about parking or who owns what.
I would agree with that.
Okay.
I would.
Thank you. What's happening?
But half the people eating, they'll be coming down the trails and the other side and going back, but I don't even mean to gather.
I know. So it's been years.
No, but you know, you know what I'm saying.
Right, they don't need parking. And half the people who park there, like me, don't eat there. We just park up, we go inside, put our boots on.
Probably quicker to get, probably in the morning, it's probably quicker to go there first or everything else.
Ski stuff not run.
That's not gonna, that that's not gonna happen for long, OJ, you better enjoy that.
You know, we're gonna publicly, publicly disclosing my secrets.
I think it's the cats out of the bag anyway.
Uh, it's.
I've been in that top ski and you're gonna hurt me.
But so 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 look, let's, so let's listen to questions that we need, we we need to identify.
Questions.
We need to identify.
Look, Carol, just speak and then you can add.
Oh, but we'll go ahead.
Have you already put it down here?
Is parking uh.
I I don't even want to ask who owns the land.
We want, we want to see the lease.
A notice properly, I have to know.
Well, we wanna know who it's supposed to deal with, so.
Who's in charge?
Right. I agree with you. Yeah, who's the charge?
Okay.
And we want to see the lease.
The two thousand and four approval, one hundred and seventy six seats, whatever the plan was, if I even have a plan.
Think the minutes, maybe.
For a plan for what was.
Right.
Way back when. Um, you know, did they have a bar? How many, how long have we been, have they had a liquor license?
How many seats do they have now?
Right.
Okay, so they told me that they only have one hundred and seventy six seats, they've not gone out there and counted it. But even though they put the bar there, they're still only supposed to have one hundred and seventy six seats. That's what they're supposed to have.
Inside.
Inside.
They're probably, yeah.
I I can't imagine that they kept the same number of seats.
I can't, not 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 with those bars as long as they are, you're probably right.
If if you go in the building and look, it's the width, but the bars take up. The space.
And the kitchen space takes up.
The the tables, I mean, anyway, let's just ask the question, how many do they have now?
Right.
Inside.
So I'll have to send Ryan out to count.
We wanna know about the hours of operation too. Because that's, you know.
I I, all of the stuff I've looked at, I have not seen anything remotely adjusting the hours of operation.
Well.
Yeah. Well, I could have.
That's a big, that that's a big change.
Sorry. Health storage up here, that's possible.
Let's ask about kitchen facilities. Dishwashing.
They did add, in addition to the bar. With no illegal seats, they did add two sinks, they paid for those.
The hours of operation, the bars. Um. I mean. I I think, I think that.
So is um. So you were saying, is the exclusive use. That the whole business about, can we?
Who has the right?
Who who has the right to decide who comes in? So if, for instance. You know, Paul's grandchild decides to have a wedding there. In the middle of the winter while skiing is going on and they. Like only allow those people in, guests in, keep the Loom guests out. Is that in the lease? Is that, that's one of the questions you want to be.
They have the, who has the ability to control. Um. Outside operations or or or.
Non-ski operations.
Non-ski operations or functions. Functions other than skiing.
Players out for that particular property.
We do, I mean, cut. If Pergori, Pergosi owns it and he says, I don't care about skiers, I'm gonna have a board of directors meeting here with three hundred. Three hundred stockholders.
Right, right.
Where are they gonna, where are they gonna park? Yeah, truly, that's where I was coming from this whole time, what was that?
And and our list to use is a restaurant and lounge separate, or they are the same use, so they are considered food service.
Is entertainment a separate use?
There's separate, yeah, entertainment, separate use and on on the. On the water tap.
Well, you know, the water tap, we can get the information, but it's not our call.
But the, but the water tap would need to be revisited. Based on. Based on the fact that there were no bars in the two thousand and.
Right, well, we can refer that to the board of select, but we don't make, we don't deal with the water and soil.
So in this.
Be nice to get all the questions and answers at once, that, you know.
The city, we couldn't get it, so.
Is this still, you know, what what has changed with this?
Yeah.
How many, how many seats, they said they had, okay, OJ, so, so I don't know if you've seen this long call.
Oh, is.
It was a plan, they're they're playing the revision.
Okay.
So it says on the bottom here, pretty great, but let me try and do it here, so I get over the stuff. Uh, no, existing occupancy. Low to remain the same, interior occupancy, one hundred and thirty. Exterior occupancy, forty four, so that would have been one hundred and seventy four. So that that, they they would have had it with exterior occupancy, making a change with the bar, but what they didn't realize was. Changes, e- e- even though the seating didn't change, the use they have changed, which makes it. Brings it in, that's why when we were talking, I was trying to tell, if you wanna do this. There's probably no one that's gonna complain, but come in, give everybody the shot to say what they want, then you can. Bring in what you want and then we can do it. The problem here is that it's just, the time it's taken is just.
Right, Carol, you have another question?
Well, Phil, what, then we say do tonight, you can change anything, you should have him come in. But conceptual site plan or whatever, we, whatever we have to do to get this back on track, we can discuss it to the. Take the meat right off the bone, then I keep going, but it won't solve anything. We gotta get the data in, advocate, meet with us to have an explaining. We keep going on, it's been two more hours, we'll tell you.
Yeah, but, you know, they were, the parties at B are aware that we were discussing it, they chose not to come.
And that's what I'm saying.
Okay.
Should make it so they have to come in, get it trained out. Working with them.
Well, I think what we're doing is is.
We're trying to get a match.
With the, a list of questions that we need to know before they come in. We don't want them to come in and say, well, we don't know what the hell we're talking about, let's let's figure out the questions and then decide. What points, what what things have have occurred that do or do not trigger site plan review.
Right.
Then we can focus on those points and not have this big wide discussion about every little thing up there.
Well, make a list and go for it.
That's what we're doing.
That's what we're doing.
We're making a list.
All right, so how long to get this research done?
Well, you gotta go back and look at the, I would think the minutes of two thousand and four and two thousand and seven. When it was discussed about this, because that's probably where you're gonna get your, this is what we were gonna do, this is what was originally gonna be big. And what that will tell you was, yeah, okay, guess what, we kinda changed it all those years, never came back in for site plan review. And here we are changing it again, so maybe we'll just come back in for site plan review, and OJ is right that, okay, so if they're gonna come back in for site plan review. If if there's more, if 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 they're having bars, been to never had bars before and it's more cap points, well, then they're gonna pay for the the bars. And maybe they get less, paying less for seating a- as a, as a cafeteria style, so, but this is, but those numbers need to be. Figured out. You know, and. And if he wants to have that. Outdoor thing there. Just come in for site plan review and get it, do it all, and that's what I told him when he left last time, get what, figure out what you want and get it. Oh, that's. But don't take. Somewhere in here, somewhere in one of these things, I I saw where he he said that he wanted to wait. That that he wanted to. Strike some sort of deal, but it, he also wanted to wait a couple of years before he came back in for site plan review until he realized. Knew what he wanted for a, a new.
I think he wanted to let it, let it run for at least a season, I don't remember.
Well, he said he wanted somewhere, and I'll try and find it, but he wanted to let it run for a couple of years until he could decide what he wanted to put there for a permanent building. Which means that he would own the building and not look and stuff.
Okay.
That that was the other thing we didn't find, that was truly, right, who owns that?
Does anyone have anything else?
For questions?
Yeah. Before we wrap, let's wrap this up.
What do you got, Carol, yeah?
So I guess.
Oh.
Well.
You're the ones gonna be looking up the.
I know, and I'm gonna listen to this and I'm gonna extract.
Okay, if you can extract.
But I I thought that, and I can't really understand it for now, but I thought that I had sent you copies of the two thousand and four minutes to the two thousand and seven minutes, maybe I didn't. Okay, so um. You want the two thousand and four as the approval, you want to verify the number of seats and food and whether there was a bar or no bar. Outside seating, um, how many liquor licenses or how long have we been granting those licenses? Places, who owns the building, who owns the land, who's in charge? Um. And what's the parking arrangement in both lease? Right? Want that?
I don't think the parking arrangement is is necessarily. If if there's anything in the lease that are, because that, I think OJ is calm, O- OJ put it. Kind of right when he said. Who is, who is the ability to have an outside?
Are there any restrictions on the operator? Regarding private functions during skiing hours?
And Carol, I'm not sure that the exact minutes of. When I've gone back and looked at minutes sometimes, it's not. The minutes of when they get it approved. There may be some, there may have been some prior.
Oh, yeah.
Prior minutes.
Uh, you almost never have minutes, like discussed anything when you approve something, usually was.
All before they can then they say.
Right, two or three meetings before.
Or right, they come and say, I wanna do this, this is what it's gonna be, and. Yeah. We've been committed to it for.
Control of the lawn, the yard operations, where the players. Have you any mention of entertainment?
And hours of operation.
Hours of operation, kitchen facilities.
Maybe hours of operation is changing, because they never. They've never ran it.
I mean, I I guess if we didn't.
That's all new.
We didn't restrict their hours of operation back in two thousand and four, might be hard to do so now.
They never had an extended hours operation, they closed when the mountain closed.
I understand that, but we have, we have to see, let's just see what's approved in two thousand and four.
Right. It was not broken. It's a nice place, it's fun to go there.
All right, let me just tell you that I have a meeting next week, or a CBA meeting next week. They have, we have this meeting, you know, planning board meeting the following week. Um.
I mean, should we, can we try and get this on from March eight?
And and when you say this on for March eighth, it just being the.
Planning base.
The planning, planning board.
Further discussion.
Okay.
So where, where are we at now, February?
February eighth.
Eight, so month from today.
Month.
So not next week.
We have.
We'll take a month of the information.
Well, she has a CBA meeting next week. And then planning board, another planning board meeting the week after, so she really doesn't have.
And I think I have two or three. Items that we have a site plan review on uh. Twenty second, and we have, I think, two conceptuals so far. On the twenty second.
Well, we're gonna be able to walk and chew gum, I mean, we're not be able to get, I would think. We're not be able to get the information, but I'm just thinking, I mean, it's just.
Well, yeah.
So I mean, if she stopped doing everything else, yeah, but but.
Carol's not gonna be all, also, you probably not gonna be looking for this information, you're gonna have somebody else look for it.
Like who?
Does Ryan look for it or your?
No.
Yeah, how about the, which is her other helper there?
Me, sir.
The town clerk, I mean, the tax, tax.
Collector.
She's the tax clerk. And she has time.
Yeah. She working for the planning board or the select board?
She's working for the executive, she is the tax collector.
So in other words, she's off the planning board budget.
She's partly planning board, partly.
What's the ratio? I've been trying to get that in every year, nobody's ever given it to me.
That's a Karina question. I don't know.
Because it's not that eager if you're paid any more or any less, the election of which the government is getting charged for it. I mean, this thing's been going since December first.
I know.
They they knew.
I agree with you, I agree with you, I agree with you, I mean, I I agree with you.
I know.
Mm hmm. Get current.
I just like to. It's a current.
You know, I think once we get the information and we'll decide what. What we wanna talk to them about. I mean, do you wanna just get information on the eighth and have them in, rather than be like. Looking through it and what are we gonna do?
I don't know why we can't have the information, but saying maybe we're gonna have a couple of. Of our conceptuals and just talk about it ourselves and say, okay, now we've got this information. And we're gonna go from, here's the information, we're gonna look at it, and then we're gonna say, okay, here's the things they need to address. So why can't we do that?
Gonna have, just have that discussion in contracts or meeting, we can't discuss it.
Oh, no, I agree, but, right.
Good, like you said, yes, he, the major problems here, but we should have him do a meeting, get a little wind vote on it.
Yeah.
Get a little, we're just being, have it documented.
Oh, that's, that's what we're trying to do, we need. We need the information, so.
I think it's gonna be better, he he's gonna need the information too, because. If it is him that has to come in. For site plan review. And he wants to make these changes, like either put that box back out there, whatever he wants to do. He's gonna need to know what he needs to fill out on his site planning review uh application. So he's gonna need that too.
Right, he's gonna need the data that we, that Carol gets to us.
Yeah.
And the results of our discussion on whatever meeting we we discuss that, I I think March eighth is fine. I mean.
Well, Carol just said she can't get it to us by the twenty second.
Yeah, and and I. You know, I don't know what we're gonna do, what are we gonna do?
I'm all right, I'm.
But if we can get it to Friday before the March eighth meeting, then we can review it over the weekend.
If we can, yeah. Why don't we say it, a- as soon as she gets it, let us know, because if we can, if we can review it before, if there's. If there really isn't that much out there. You know, she might have it by the, by the time we meet and review it. At that meeting that we've got those couple conceptuals we can. But it isn't, it's only, it's only the planning board reviewing it.
And a site plan review that.
But twenty second, she's, yeah, she said she can't get it to us, I mean, if she gets to us, she gets to us, and then we can. Um, so. Open there. So there's no need to continue, we can just, you know, Carol gets it by the twenty second, we can talk about it on the twenty second, but. It looks like, it looks like somebody March eighth and then probably March twenty second to have the powers at B come in if we find anything on the eighth. It looks like, it looks like somebody March eighth and then probably March twenty second to have the powers that be come in if we find anything on the eighth.
So he'll end up getting what he wanted anyway, which was to continue it through the season.
I mean, that's, you know. Does anyone else have any other questions or thoughts on this?
Oh, you would beat it up pretty good. You gotta be fair, you know? What's right?
So we got a letter from um, a popular letter from Rick Elliott, we got it for his rich property owners association.
And that was supposed to be attached to the minutes, that was the. I was told that you were looking for. That letter supposedly Carol had on her machine, so. That is the letter that I think they're talking about, it's the only letter that I can figure that they were talking about. It's not the right one that I remember which one it is.
That's wrong. The FRPOA cites downstream to downstream residents, but this has nothing to do with the downstream residents. Let me tell you, it's on watch Harrington, it's difficult if you read that.
Well, this is the letter that um. David Jaeger referenced at the meeting two weeks ago.
I think.
It was what, two years old?
Yeah. And when are they coming back in, they're coming in, they coming on the eighth?
That's what, that's what you guys said, so.
We'd have to take a look and see what Article two is. It says that Article two sends forth a different method of the amendment. Does not require the deck or obtain approval from FRPOA. And the court decision. Rick Elliott saying it doesn't, we we don't have a copy of the court decision. Correct me if I'm wrong, but wasn't the whole thing about whether? The Forest Ridge Property Owners Association has the right to take that or when they took it over? And whether they had the right to take it over, all of that?
Or whether they.
Whether they did take it over, so we would need to see. We would need a copy of the court documents and say that, right?
Right, I mean, we're not gonna just, this is just basically Rick Elliott typing something up, see.
Right, right, that's what I'm saying.
Right, and they're wrong.
Right.
But you know what sentence I think is the most interesting, the whole thing?
That's that.
Once the ponds is completed. Should say are completed. And the last four units are constructed. The site will be landscaped and very little will be needed to be done to maintain the ponds and the pines. So he's saying that the 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 easy maintenance occurs. After the ponds are completed and after the last four units are constructed.
Right.
And landscaped.
And that gentleman, it was on the, the, the property owner association said.
The exact same thing.
Exactly, he said, well, a lot could happen between now and the time those other units are done.
It's aren't finished and the landscaping is nowhere near finished.
Well, and there's a, I don't know if anyone's seen it, I don't know where it is, but they're. They're having a public auction. For all the land up there, it, from what I understand, it does not include the pines.
This is, this is the backland, the three hundred acres?
No, no.
Oh, no, this is a. It's a ton of it, have you seen this?
Yeah, it it, the, the foreclosing party. Is Jaeger Family Investments, the lender. The the ones. Whatever, it's Jaeger Family Investments or something, is it the legal, the title on it?
Yeah, yeah, that didn't.
So they're, they're foreclosure on basically the Elliott's. On the Elliott's, correct.
But this is, thi- this doesn't say anything about the foreclosure, this is just. JSA auctioneers or auctions are are gonna do a public auction for all these different parcels.
Look at the legal, legal notice that was in the unit leader.
Oh, is that?
Right, it's, it's.
I just wanted to make.
It's the bank, David always tells you that he's the bank.
Yeah.
Okay, it's the bank, the lenders, foreclosing on.
One of these pieces, one of these pieces in here, if you look at the tax map that's on. It's actually where the brook runs down out of, out of the ponds.
Now, Coolidge Construction is the pines at uh at the, at Forest Ridge.
Yep.
That's the owner of that development.
Yeah, right.
Includes those unbuilt for units.
I heard some mess up.
Two duplexes, will you?
Oh, it's real mess. Open the backside, go to the wood and take a look. Well, one of these parcels that I, that, cause I pulled up the town tax mapping up to look at, cause it labels all the. Things and sections that's on it. And one of the sections is a narrow little section and you can see the brook comes out of the, there, it goes down through it, so they're gonna auction off. That piece of property where the brook and, not the, not the paw, pines, but the brook that comes out to run off, so. So that seems a little weird, if that happens, and that other gentleman's comment, like you said about. There could be a lot that could happen between the time, because things slowed down, my understanding there. Uh financial stuff over there and uh they have a hard time. Those, getting the money to build those other lots. And when I looked at that plan, one of the plans, it shows another. What, what do you call the uh? Um. So you got the pop, the pawn, and then there's these other things that are before, what do you call them?
Four bay.
Or this, there's a, a four bay that's up in that back. On a plane that's up in the back part of the four that aren't built yet. And I don't know if that four bay's been built.
Right, I think we have to be careful about talking about. Pending applications.
Well, no, no, this, she's brought this up to ask if it was right, but. And we, we, we're discussing what the gentleman said about.
Okay.
Who has the right to do it? I think we need more information in this too, before we, this is all about releasing that maintenance bond.
Well, they're supposed to come back in and present us with. Right.
Should we tell them what we're looking for? Just like we're, that we're looking for the.
We, we should have told them at the last meeting, I believe we did. Yeah. Well, we told them to work it out amongst themselves. They were kind of right, meet, meet together and figure out what needs to be done, solution and all of that. I, I mean.
And they're gonna bring it to us. Are they gonna bring their solution to us, because i- if they're, if they. Come to a solution that doesn't. Protect the integrity of the pawn. Then that's not the talent, that's not the talent, that's interest, is it?
The ownership of those bonds is what's in question, so. That's what they have to work out.
I didn't think they were, it was the ownership, it was the, the maintenance of it.
Maintenance, well, right, does, does, does the.
The ownership too.
Does the developer still have responsibility to to? Do it or is the homeowners association? So once, once the homeowner associate. They can come in here and, and have a mutual answer. Then we're good, if they still disagree. Then we'll just.
See, I would say that we would just wanna make sure that it's in the best interest of the town as well, if someone's, whatever their agreement is.
Application, we can be talking about it, right?
That's what I think, they need, we need more information, we should ask them. You guys don't think so? Last one.
Uh, uh where's that notice, the auction notice, is that, was that in Manchester?
Yes.
And the carers. And the courier?
Yeah. You want them?
Yeah.
They're all.
Okay, next item, uh. From the Board of Selectmen's January thirtieth meeting. North Country Council meeting, Selectman Daley attended a recent North Country Council meeting where they discussed. Workforce housing prices, Jack noted that Lincoln does not have a seat at table despite the town being due and offer to be Lincoln's town representative, planning board would have to nominate Jack Daley. And the POS would have to approve it, OJ suggested that this be discussed during the next planning board meeting, February eighth. And to have them nominate Jack and the Board of Selectmen will then approve it. Sorry for the.
Go on.
So I'm sorry for the short notice, however, I am just completing the minutes and this was discussed towards the end of the meeting. And I'm hoping you can cover this tomorrow night under other business.
Joe, but you're still a representative too, right?
Yeah.
I've been to last two, three meetings.
So we can have two representatives. And I'm the other one, I have not been able to.
I've been doing them on. Remotely, but not in person.
Yeah.
Now there's COVID, always should start taking them in person.
Okay.
Does Jack have a conflict? Conflict in any way with this OJ? In regards to being on that committee for the town that has, that's doing all the research on this, I I don't, I'm just asking.
I don't, I think it's the opposite of a conflict, I think it's a.
You think it's a benefit?
It's a benefit, yeah.
I just don't know, I I'm just asking, because if if the town got involved in anything, that's all, just asking. Jack's very, Jack's very involved in it and it's a good thing that he's involved in it, you know? It's just, I just don't want it to be.
Big problem is with Lincoln. Going workforce housing, where are you gonna put it, this is so, so little land resources.
Right, but let's stick to nominating him on for the committee.
But I'd like to make sure that Joe's still on it too.
Right, I mean, that's why, you know, we don't wanna kick one potty off in favor of another.
We probably go together and just. Pick up his bones in the way over.
Oh yeah, I think Jack would love to drive with you. I'll make Jack.
All right, is there a second?
This is, got it.
All right.
Should we nominate Jack and Joe, so we reaffirm it?
Let's one hundred times, Jack. All right, Joe seconded. All in favor, say aye, all aye, anyone opposed? Attention, sorry, that carries. Is there a motion to nominate Joe?
I'll make motion, I'll make.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Right, all in favor, say aye, all aye. Right, so Joe should add, Jack.
Yes, I'm ready.
Hey. You're voting for yourself, Joe, so it doesn't matter.
One thing though, I was really curious. Most of the companies come in on workforce housing. But why don't they put it up with their own, put some of their own money with the mouth there, says, puts up with their own help? To have an usky or putting out people to bring him in.
Well, there are, I believe that's been.
There's a few, there's a few being done, Blue Mountain does some, uh.
Dennis Ducharme.
Herman Fluid and Flutie up here does some.
Burgosian, Burgosian just did one down in Woodstock, my understanding.
You bought Maple Lodge?
Maple Lodge. That's my understanding, that's.
It's been that quite a while.
I mean, you know, truly, someone should have bought that, the old fire station and the, the.
Who bought that?
Uh, guy that's.
Group up.
No, he he bought the town, he bought the town garage.
Twin Bunge?
No, um, who's the one? Cross, who's the one across Wilson's Mobile, what's that restaurant, or the? Cross, right, right, before you get to Wilson's Mobile, what's the name of that place? I've been there a couple.
The family public house.
Family public house.
Like next to it, yeah.
The owner of the family public house, I believe. Bought the garage, town garage. That would have been a great place for someone that owns a kayak place or, to put a couple of. Low income places to sit there by the river, I mean, holy cow. And that old fire station would have been great.
You get about three fifty, you invested in it.
He didn't paint it, he didn't.
No, but he had. Dude, it's cheap fees and top of the purchase price, comes about three fifty altogether.
The, the old fire station, I don't think they.
It's not like a town ride.
Yeah, that, that he paid a little for, but the old fire station, I'd heard it was like two or three hundred thousand.
I think it was that much, maybe, could be.
Still a good price for that.
I don't know how big a lot is, I don't know any of that.
They only bought six fireplace in there for.
If, if the building, the structure was good, you could have made.
All right, and there's a few, um, some emails, um. It's a question about who is up. And it was inadvertently noticed that. There was a planning board seat, um. That was common vacant, that was up and that's not the case, and a couple of people signed up for it. Uh so the. Town clerk just quoted, the advice we got from New Hampshire Municipal Association was just a notice. Post that correction notice and then apply, let the two people, um. That applied to run for the position, know, know about the error, that there is in fact no position. Uh. Open, so currently the terms are two up. Another two up and then this year nobody is up and that's sloppy also. So there's no need to change anybody's terms at this time.
Did I hear they were trying to make that six member board and a planning board one time, so we're gonna make a mention of it?
I don't know that.
I'm just curious, that's what I heard.
Oh, it's either five or seven, that's.
I know, imagine if somebody's trying to get, trying to get a six member in, so I don't know how that would work.
See the five result according to the hours, say.
Okay, then there's the email from Daniel.
Yeah, well, we'll get to that.
I'm getting tired.
All right, so, you know, we have two alternates. Um. You know, Max, one of them, and you know, did advertise to fill the second alternate, we never got anybody. So Daniel Black just put in a letter of interest to come in on uh. May first, I believe, starting in May it says. So. I don't believe it's noticed now. There's no requirement to notice it.
Well, what, what do our bylaws say, I think there's a. A planning board bylaws say that. I'm trying to recall, up to.
Up to three.
Up to three, so we don't have to have more than one.
Right, but I mean, we've kept it two the last few years.
Okay.
So I mean, I, I, you know, personally, I prefer to keep it at two.
I don't, no problem, dude, I mean.
Yeah. It's good, so. We wanna uh. Nominate Danielle to fill the vacant alter, or do you wanna advertise again, it's your call.
See.
We advertise, didn't we just advertise it?
We have some.
We talked about the uh, the alternate was advertised like six months, was on the door. Was on the door, I mean.
We have someone that confessed it.
I'm making, I'm making a motion to nominate Daniel Black.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Move it, you lose it. Like, like your decision, you guys said, it's been on the job for six months, worked for us.
Yeah.
Got zero.
Yeah, he's, you know, she's a little nervous about it and um she wants to try, she wants. If it, if it doesn't work for her, you know, I told her that she could just say it doesn't work for me and. Design, so.
Well, the thing about it also, she don't have time every night if you don't want her and you don't.
Well, yeah, but that, you know, it would be nice if they would come, so they would learn what's going on.
She does like to learn and, you know, she is. She's very positive about it, she's just a little nervous.
The only stupid question is the one she doesn't answer.
Right. Well, the last thing is, um. The legal is if you could. If we can discuss that. Uh Ray and I.
Oh, yeah.
Spent a lot of time trying to peel all the layers of the onion. For this, um. Oh, what are you hearing?
What's?
About the well, so I want you to read the email, um, that I have including your kind of it from.
So I got the, I got there.
So what we have.
Find it, I've got this.
Basically, we had two surveyors saying one thing and we have two surveyors saying another thing. And.
I didn't see that.
So.
Let me find it.
So this weekend, I'm going to take. The, you know, two of the surveys, two staples, get, you know, to get them scanned. Send them off to Cartographic, see if they can figure out. How it is that they came up with, what they came up with on the tax maps. Uh but this, um, Ray is suggesting that we go with the two more recent surveys, he spent a lot of time talking to the surveyor. The two recent, the two recent surveyors, the two older surveyors are very good surveyors too, so. Um, but anyway, I want you to read this and see if your. There's also discussion about the wells.
I didn't, I can't find this letter that you're talking about.
It's an email, planning.
Yeah, you can park it on the bottom.
I just went through that, I'm gonna go through that, I might have put it in.
Yeah.
Brian Norton's thing, he's, it looks pretty good. Deputy plant, oh, that's.
Yeah. This is about the wells.
We'll give you this weekend, like Carol.
Hang on, I'm coming.
We'll give you this weekend.
That's it, this is it, it's on the bottom. Thanks, Carol.
There's thirteen wells up there.
Right, first, did the board put the seventy five foot wetland, um, setback? Who put, they put it in, in there on their own?
No, we told them to put it on there.
Okay, but I mean, it's, it's there now.
Right, we could just leave it if you want.
Well, we just think this is already, this is already approved, so I mean. So I mean, to make changes now, I don't think it's.
So he had to fix things.
Right, so right, he submitted an inaccurate survey.
All, all he needs to do for, put a note on it.
Progress in, I mean, a work in progress, so we just wanna make sure. Uh what we come up with a do for the final. Means what we need.
Well, the first one, all, all he needs is a note on a plan that says. Should there be a uh onsite wastewater, they will require seventy five foot setback.
That's from the well, though, I believe.
From the well, from the wells. That just needs to be a note.
Or the note could say, there are no proposed onsite wastewater disposal.
Allowed.
This, I mean, this, not allowed, this not being proposed.
Okay, see that? But, but they would need to know that if they did, they had.
Well, I mean, they would, they would check that when they apply for subject design.
Right, because that's done through the state.
Yeah, right, I mean, I wouldn't. I, I don't think we need to worry about it. Anyone just disagree?
They can't use the, the wells for water supply unless they go to the state of New Hampshire anyway.
Say, say it again?
They couldn't use those wells unless they go to the, to the state of New Hampshire anyway, because they would be their own. They would be a, uh, what you call forest privately up, uh.
If you, um, a water system, what do they?
It would be a water system.
Actually, probably. Depends on the number of units.
Huh?
Depends on the number of units.
Number, number of people, it's like it's thirty people using the system, but, but they're not.
They're not proposing to use the wells, and they're not proposing a, a, a wastewater disposal system. So just like every other plan that comes in that doesn't have either one of those.
Right, it's no.
We don't even need to mention it, right?
Right. So I don't think we, you're right.
Let's, let's just tell them to take that off.
Yeah, that's fine, okay.
Number one, they can remove, remove the seventy-five foot setback delineation.
And you can remove number two, because we don't have anything to do with that. And if he does decide.
You should leave them. You just don't have to find all thirty of them.
Right. But we have, we, we don't.
I mean, we could ask.
The wells are, 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 are decommissioned per the state requirements, cause that's, that's for the owner to do and for the, with the state, not for the town. Cause they're not hooked up to the town at all, and before he did.
The, 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 the regulations regarding decommissioning is not, so somebody can sneak in and hook them up to the town or the, the, the.
That's something we can use.
No, it's so that. Potentially chemical or dangerous waste can't get down this conduit that leads down into.
Right.
Our aquifer, okay, so, so leaving them on there and showing that they're decommissioned is.
But that's up to the state.
Right, I know, we did ask him, we did ask him to locate, locate those wells when he came in for subdivision, so I.
Carol said thirteen, it said five, uh thirteen.
There were thirteen.
There were thirteen wells.
Wait, hold on.
There were thirteen wells, they were listed on the D E S website, there were thirteen wells, whoever, it didn't say where they were. Um, you know, it just, it had data associated with how deep they were and how much flow they had.
But why isn't the state, if they're on the state website, why isn't the state asking them if they're, if they're active, and so they're not telling them that they gotta decommission them. Decommission them with acceptable statements.
I think we should do what Ray's.
Well, it's only twelve wells there now. One of them has been added on John Cable's property, which is a private entity, which was part of that, part of that, those wells, that piece of land was subdivided, it sold to John. So we twelve wells there now.
Hey.
They pull out the pumps, they have the rest of John's land.
Okay, Ray is, is, is recommending that we include a condition of approval. That the wells be properly decommissioned per what state regulations. I'm agreeing with that.
I'm, I'm not only because we've already approved the subdivision, we're kinda going back and making changes.
But they are on board with this, here, part of his discussion is with Ethan Conley, with Ethan the surveyor. We're going back and forth, this is something that, you know, they're on board with.
Okay, so you're just asking the board to, to make sure we're on board with it?
Right.
Okay, then, I guess if the parties are in agreement. I don't have a problem.
Potentially use the wells for their own watering lines.
Yeah.
Like I said, some of those wells have been no longer in that property, it belongs to John Chamberlain.
With three, it appears that they fixed the, um, southern boundary issue.
That's the thing that I told you, we have two surveys, showing one, two surveys showing the other. But, and we're gonna go with the two, the more recent two surveys, one is Steve Tower and Ray Saborn, one is, you know. The guy who's Lev, Lebel. Um, that, um, Legary, I mean, that Legary and Ethan Conley and McManus all hired. And the earlier ones are, but we're still sending them off to the mapping company, see if they. And enlighten us as to, you know, what they did. On our tax bands.
And it's still saying, and number two, the five locations, existing decommissioned wells, the five existing wells be decommissioned, we can say. But then we need to make sure that all wells on the property are decommissioned in accordance with. State requirements, so if it's five or thirteen or twenty, it don't matter, just say that all wells on the property.
And the wells are only used for five years, that's then they're not used at all.
But they, they, they just say all wells.
That's, let's take it up in number four, number five says that the plans locate. The five decommissioned wells.
You have my number two.
Okay.
We have the plan here, all five.
That's what the plan locates, now, if you go to number four, it talks about the other, about the thirteen number.
Right, so the five, the five's part of the thirteen, right?
Yes.
So why don't we just say all the wells, if they have, if they find another one and say there's fourteen on there, then you gotta say, oh, he says, well, okay, they only.
It might have been thirteen, but they don't know if the Ross have they filled in or.
Just say all wells, if, if there's only ten, it don't matter, or there's sixty, just say all wells.
But, but there's five located on the plan. Okay, we can't make one of them appear on the plan unless we know where they are. Plans locate five existing decommissioned wells, that's a fact. Based on discussions with Nate, we suspect the wells have not been decommissioned as per state requirements, we don't know that, but we suspect it is. So as a condition of approval, we recommend that the existing wells. Um, and not intended to be, was, not intended to be used as water supply, and they be properly decommissioned. So the five that are located on the well.
Yeah.
Condition of approval. Period.
What about, what about the, the next eight?
Okay, let's go to number four, you agree with number two?
Yeah, I wanna hear what you propose of number four.
Based on our review, we cannot confirm or deny that there are other wells on the site. So there may be, there may be not, Joe just offered some information that he's pretty sure one of them is no longer on the site because it got subdivided off.
Yeah.
Right.
Two years ago.
Two thousand eighteen, John Chamberlain.
So no one, either applicant or his surveyor has seen any well beyond those shown on the plans.
That's what I said, you just said all wells, it don't matter, it covers everything, it's up to the applicant to find out how many wells it's got on there, and if he finds one. Say if he finds one three years from now, he's gonna have to decommission.
We recommend requesting the applicant contact the town if and when other wells are discovered on the site. And that if they are found, the applicant ensure that the wells will be decommissioned as per state requirements.
Perfect.
So we're saying, we know there's five, and they agreed to do those, if there's more, they have to let us know, and they have to probably decommission that. Let's not convolute this.
And that's what I was trying not to do, I was trying to say all wells, I didn't give a shit if there was three, five, ten, twenty.
This, this, this provides in between, the one that, that are on the plan, that we're going to have in our files for a hundred years. And ones that we don't know about, but if they occur, they have to do the same thing, and they have to let us know about them, so that we can note.
That they're on there.
That is more.
No, just put a rock on top.
All the D E S database must show where they're at, if they are, they should be asking the D E S, show us where they're at.
Well, they're so old, they're back from eighty-six, eighty-six.
All the wells down to Sol, this facility is still.
Not a discovery on the site or the D E S site. Then they need to let the town know and decommission them. No, that's not how the state.
I would think if they're on a D E S site, the D E S could tell you where they are, cause they certainly, if they're on a site, they should be able to tell you where they are, and.
Okay, so do we wanna not approve this whole thing, or, or, I mean, what do we do? They should be able to, and they can't, so now we're in a huge dilemma, what do we do? Seriously.
Well, has anybody gone, it doesn't say whether anybody's gone to the D E S.
It sounds like.
Yes, I crated it out, Ray looked at it, he discussed it with the surveyor. They, you know, it looks like, this is what we surmise. As best we can, we, we might be wrong, we might be right, but it looks like initially, when they did that development up there, they were gonna have individual. Septic systems and individual wells, but then they didn't have enough adequate input from the well, the well wasn't producing enough. To do that, and so then they tried something else, they were gonna have a private water system. It looks like there's little vestiges of evidence that suggest they were gonna do a private well system, but they didn't have enough water again. And so that they must have come to the town at some point and wanted to hook in.
You want the whole scenario for that, I can tell you exactly what happened. Mansion Hill could not, development could not be built, it was a time war, it was time to water and soil connection. Zepala came in for the. I was here, I was on the board, I talked to Zepala, I was in all property.
Yes, he's right.
And what happened is.
Huh?
What happened is Zepala put wholly, put a whole complete sewer system in down the face of Mansion Hill. That was capable to take care of the whole system, not each one for each building, but one system for all the units, I don't need to do that. It's still there, it's a nice big lawn right now, green as hell. The well came up as, as a forest ridge, I mean, uh, Mansion Hill went up over the hill, came back to this side over here. They put that holy, that building, but aside this room. You have all the wells pump into it, they have plenty of water to do it, but it's not steady air, they were, they hooked down the town water. Touch time, the town had enough water for it to do so, and convert on it and break off the, the septic system. This is down to make him, to, to take off the septic, but Zepa went to Zepa and did it himself, hook on the town so there'll be any problem, I haven't keep it updated. It's the whole scenario of it, it wasn't each well for each building, it was a complete community well. And a source for all the buildings in one, I could bring you over, show you right where it is.
Was it still operating as a private?
And they were disconnected back in nineteen eighty-eight, eighty-nine, he hooked on the town shore, that's moot point.
Okay, good.
Just so you know, I was there, I was privy to it, and I even worked on it.
So what were you gonna do when you die?
I'm scratching that out by this. No, I'm see, I'm not lying to you.
For saying you're, you know, I, I remember Zepala, but I don't remember all of that.
I can remember he picked out a planning board and he put the cops, cause he was having a fit. Andrew came in and they went smooth after that.
I remember Zepala doing some stuff, but I remember all of that.
I can take you, show you exactly what hookups are.
Oh, oh, I'm okay, Joe.
The lawn is really nice and green and lush right there, even after all these years.
Good feeding.
All right, so going back to this, are we good with?
Are we good to, if we haven't changed these recommendations?
Yeah.
So we're good, all right, let's move on.
Thank you.
Carol, let's try and contradict you, but. Definitely written in there, it's not always earned its place to be when you come, when you analyze it twenty years after that, unless you're a birth lawyer.
Is there any other business?
I think that's enough.
All right, I think, Paul, you don't second it. Any other discussion, all in favor? Good night.
Good night.
Carol, one of the wells up there is no longer on that map, because they sold off the property.